Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. It is Tuesday, November 5th at approximately 7:05 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt and I'm joined by my fellow board members Chris Weider and C.C. Van Tyn. We're also joined by our Town Administrator Blythe Robinson and Executive Assistant Judith Lizardi. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's Government Cable Channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube Channel. With that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Blythe, would you please take us through our agenda this evening?
Of course. Our first item of business is a public comment period, followed by the action items which include a public meeting regarding the layout of five streets that we'll be considering at town meeting on the 19th, which are Tailwind Circle, Silver Fox Run, Saddle Ridge Way, Liberty Lane, and Meeting House Road. After that, to consider approval of using the Norfolk Town Hill for the Norfolk Carol Sing-Along on December 14th, and then to consider taking any votes the board would like to on the articles for special town meeting. There are three warrants to be signed and one set of minutes to be signed, and then after that, we have an executive session posted with regard to potential litigation.
Very good. Thank you very much. So the first item tonight is our public comment period. For those who are unaware, anybody who is joining us this evening is able to come join us and share something with the board and the Town Administrator for around three minutes, with the understanding that we are not able to dialogue if it's not an agenda item. So do we have anybody who would like to come up this evening? Mr. Rosenberg, as per usual, sir.
All eyes on David.
Good evening. Three things I hope will be fast. First, to report a success from the public comment period. At a previous meeting, I had talked about retrieving bottles or cans that had referred deposit and redeeming it, and in a conversation I had with Blythe this afternoon, she told me that she's made progress on this and that there is the expectation that the DPW, the transfer station, will have a convenient place where bottles and cans can be put and the DPW workers will bring them over to the King Philip donation area. So thank you, Blythe and board. The second thing is to just say that at the last meeting when I was talking about remote participation under the open meeting law, I hope that that will be something the board will discuss at some time in the future, and I wanted to mention that I consider that separate from my effort to increase citizen engagement in town, and I hope that will proceed also in the future. Thank you.
Record time. Thank you, sir. Is anybody else willing to share this evening? I'm seeing none, so let's move on to agenda item number two. That is the public meeting on the layout of the following streets for acceptance at Fall Town Meeting: Tailwind Circle, Silver Fox Run, Saddle Ridge Way, Liberty Lane, and Meeting House Road.
So, in your packet is a memo from the Town Planner, Rich McCarthy, who's here in the audience to follow up on those details for you as well. All of the butters of the five streets have received a notice about this meeting and invitation to come and provide their comments on these. This is a critical step in the process to asking town meeting to formally accept these five streets as public ways at town meeting on November 19th. And once the board has heard that comment and is ready to vote, there is a certification in your packet. There's one for Tailwind Circle. We have one for each street, which will need to be voted on and then executed by the board at the conclusion of the meeting tonight. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rich and see if he's got any other comments or input he'd like to give you on the status of these streets and the process, after which I'd suggest, after debate, the board take public comment.
Thank you very much. Rich, welcome.
Thank you. I don't actually have any specific comments to add.
Okay.
I think just take, go choose a road and go road by road, I guess.
Okay.
For the public, if they're here, for each one. And then I could maybe comment to specifics if something comes up.
Okay.
Very good. Before we move to the public comment, C.C., Chris, anything for Rich?
Nothing yet.
Nope.
Okay. In that case, let's start at the top. Does anybody have anything to comment on Tailwind Circle? Tailwind Circle. I'm seeing none. Chris, C.C., anything?
Nope.
All right. Next one. Anybody for Silver Fox Run? Sir? If you could just please use a microphone. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Joe Singovich, resident of Two Silver Fox Road, and my neighbor Mike here too. We have little kids. His are running around. Mine are not running around age yet. We've noticed, you know, as like the development gets finished, we're at the bottom of a hill, and I emailed it in, I got a good response back that this is more of, I guess, of a police matter, but we didn't know is this town, as the road gets accepted, if there's either like a speed bump or signage that can be put up, because people do go well above kind of what a neighborhood speed would be coming down the bottom of that hill. It's not really like a cut-through street, and it's certainly a neighborhood road, but it's, people are zipping along, and with kids out on the sidewalk and stuff, it should be addressed.
This is Mike Moreno, Silver Fox Road as well. It's not really a cut-through, but I think a lot of people from Franklin use it to get to other parts of town, so there are sometimes cars coming down there pretty fast, so it'd be nice to have some kind of speed limit or, you know, caution kits in the area would be great.
Rich, did you have any comments? This has been already referred over to Chief Stone.
It has. So one of the things is that once, hopefully it gets a favorable recommendation tonight, then it goes on to town meeting, and then if town meeting accepts the road, then it becomes a public way, and then we can look to evaluate different options relative to provide some guidance to motors to, it is a neighborhood. The one aspect of it that we probably might want to think about in long view is the speed limit signs and posting those, because those come with a whole host of requirements that sometimes we don't want to necessarily post the speeds, because the speeds are probably actually much higher than people are actually traveling, so we don't want to... But there are ways to help to try to make people aware of it, to be respectful of the neighborhood, to drive slowly, so we can sort of look at those options.
Very good. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Anybody else for Silver Fox Run? All right, I'm seeing none. Our next one, anybody for Saddle Ridge Way? Sir, please use a microphone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bill Walker, I'm at One Saddle Ridge Way, and the only comment they had is that the town has done a wonderful job at laying this out. Nothing critical, but the plantings and everything were greater than we had expected. They did a terrific job, so no adverse first comments whatsoever on it.
Thank you very much.
And I hope everybody else feels the same way.
Anybody else for Saddle Ridge Way?
So the only, well, I will say relative to Saddle Ridge Way, we put it on here, we're moving it forward. The question with this particular property is because the town ended up taking over the road to complete it, is we might not be able to get a deed executed for the road as well as the open space, so this would be more of a contingent. We might, so the town meeting is November 19th. We have 120 days thereafter to acquire the interest in the road as well as the open space, so we'll have to see. It might not make it through the whole process, which case, we might have to go back at it this spring, but we're going to try to get that done. So, just as a advisory.
So this is a technical land-taking question?
So we're not really, yeah, we're not really taking it. His, we're getting the deed to the land from the owner, and then it'll become within the town inventory, so it's a, you know, a transfer of the interest of the road. No taking.
So it wasn't now, it would be later?
If we, if we have to go through the taking process, we would potentially consider taking, but we, taking without consideration for any money, so it would be just to be able to acquire the fee of the road and then become a municipal town way.
Right.
But not compensation to do that, so we're going to see how this works through, but I just wanted to make the board aware.
That wouldn't have any effect on...
I'm sorry, just going to use a microphone so that people can hear you at home.
That wouldn't have any effect on plowing, cleaning, that type of thing on the road?
No, it wouldn't unfortunately. Well, depends how you look at it, but fortunately for you...
You do a very good job now. I just didn't want to see it stop.
Yeah, fortunately for you, no, because we, this is a case where the town had to take over, so it's already within our responsibility, so we're just, the goal here is to get it accepted, and then once we get it accepted, it becomes a town road, then we can add it to our Chapter 90 inventory and then get additional monies back to the town, because we're actually maintaining it already, so it would be change in service.
Got you. Any other questions on Saddle Ridge Way? All right, I'm seeing none. On to Liberty Lane. Anybody have any questions for Liberty Lane? I'm seeing none. And on to our last one. Anybody have any comments for Meeting House Road? Sir, in the back, if you could just please grab a mic. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred LaBerge from 68 Meeting House Road. As you may know, it's a new development along the right-hand side, and we moved there about a year ago, and after I received the letter from the board notifying us that you were having this meeting to discuss these matters, I got in touch with Bob McGee at the DPW, because there's no sign at the bottom of the hill at the junction of Liberty Lane and Meeting House, and I didn't know if that was a result of the town not officially having taken the road over, so I gave Bob a call, and he, he was very cooperative and understanding about it, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. We have friends and family that we've invited since we moved here to come and visit, and there's been some confusion about, well, couldn't find you even though they were using navigation. There was no signage there, no post. And also, at the top of the hill, there's a circle as you head down toward Castle Road, and the sign that's there that says keep right around the circle is, it looks like it's temporary. It's basically stuck like in a big tire or wheel with concrete in it, kind of unsightly, so I'm hoping maybe something, excuse me, something can be done about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So those two items are on Bob's punch list, because we did, we are, again, this is another one we took over to be responsible to complete, so he is aware of that.
Yes, he was very cooperative.
The other thing, just as a minor thing, but important thing to the residents, well, it is Meeting House as one word, and we will then proceed to have our tax maps updated to reflect that, because it shows up, if you go on our maps now, it's two different, it's two separate words, so I know that that's important to them, and it's important to us, so we'll make sure that happens as well through this process.
Just, so, right now, there's no parking signs as you go up on the, I live on Wright Farm, which is, you go up over and Castle, and people park right under the no parking signs? So, like you sit and wait for the people to come the other way, and navigating around the little roundabout can be challenging. Is it because it's not released yet that they just have signs that aren't policed? Like, at what point do I get to call and be like, can you just ticket them just once so that they actually park right under the sign?
Hopefully, after November 19th.
But that's the impediment, like, right now?
Yeah, it's not a municipal way yet, so...
It's just a suggestion.
So we really don't have the legal right to issue a ticket if we don't have an interest in the road?
You don't have a road.
I thought those signs had been taken down because of this issue.
I think they had about three to four weeks ago.
Oh, they were?
Yeah, yeah, because of this.
Oh, we're meeting house, I don't know about the other.
Okay.
So, we, once the town has gotten the road, and again, this is another one we need to get the deed for it, to resolve it within the 120 days, we'll be able to put the signs back up, and we'll be able to issue a ticket that we can enforce.
Yeah, great.
Because I did think they were kind of funny, like, they were oddly placed, so maybe that was the other, like, they were sort of temporary, like, they didn't...
Right.
Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
Like, they were like two together and then not, you know, with one line that suggested that you weren't supposed to park.
Get the microphone in the back for the gentleman once more.
I just wanted to add that, it's my understanding that those signs were put up initially because there were people who take the train, who were parking on the street. I know we had complaints about that from some of the homeowners. We also have, there's a service road behind where we each have garages in the driveway, but there are parking spots there as well, and apparently people were parking there to, you know, for the convenience or either to avoid the fees associated with parking their cars when they take the train. So I don't know if that had anything to do with those signs coming up, but...
That might, that might explain, like, they all sort of cropped up.
That's what I was told at the time, but that was just neighborhood talk.
It made sense, because people sort of sit and wait, right? Like, and you're right, like, in, at the beginning, it would explain the sheer volume.
Yeah.
There were a ton of cars.
Yes.
And I was like, that's so weird, because I know they have plenty of parking behind, and it wasn't just like someone unloading groceries or something, right? Like, who cares if there's one car? You know, you can tell people are running stuff in and out. This was like, a ton of cars.
Yeah, we do that. We'll run in the groceries through the front door.
Right. That's a different issue than people who are, and sometimes I'm actually think apropos of nothing. It's people at parties across, it's not the people who live in your houses, it's people at parties across the, I just watched the, not that it matters, but they're not parked across, right in front of their house. They're parked, like, because they've arrived from Liberty Lane, so they park going in that direction, going towards Castle on your side in front of your buildings, but they're going to parties and things across the street. When you've got nothing else to do but drive kids places.
Julie Leaf from 54 Meeting House Road. There isn't a lot of parking in the back.
Oh, is that the other issue?
It's pretty tight. And from what I gather, initially, it was supposed to be parking on Meeting House, and now it isn't. And by making it a municipal road, then you're going to be able to enforce it, where, I don't know, you know, it kind of devalues the condo, because you have a front door, but you can't park in front of your unit.
Have they done a study? Because it's narrow, like, about having certain, like, designated spots, because if there's cars parked out there, if there's people humming the other way, people, it's, it seems like it's an issue, but...
Yeah, so the roadway, it's not wide enough for on-street parking, because it, it's 24, curb to curb, and, you know, at least, you need to have at least a minimum of, at least a 10, usually 12-foot travel lane, so it's not, the original, the original design for Norfolk Commons had little inclusions along the way for on-street parking.
Oh, I see.
Okay. And then, through the process of modifying, well, the town taking over as part of the ongoing work modifying the comprehensive permits, the decision was made to, to remove that. So there is no on-street parking now, unfortunately.
There is now. There is on-street parking going on now. There's no sign.
Right. So, the ultimate, hopefully the ultimate solution is the fact that it becomes, accepted on November 19th, becomes a town road, we can, the town can post it, and then to force no parking as opposed to, you know...
That begs, oh, sorry. Just a point of order, do we need to actually get the deed before we can actually put up the signs and, and force the no parking, or just the action of town meeting will be sufficient?
It's probably a good question, just to confer with council on and see.
All right. I don't want to set expectations for anyone. If we have to wait for that, and it takes a couple weeks or a month or two longer, that's why we haven't, that's, we'll obviously stay on top of it, but...
We're optimistic we're going to have a meeting with the property and hopefully to cooperatively get that deed coming up shortly, so, but we can ask council about that.
Okay.
We actually have to have the deed at hand and then record it.
But that begs the question, I guess, again, not for the street, because I agree that, I don't think the street's wide enough for on-street parking, but as she was saying, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, I apologize. Julie was saying, there's not enough parking in the back. Where did, where do they, where else is there for, for parking? Can they go?
So the, going up Meeting House, I know the condo's on the left-hand side. There's been discussions with them. I know to try to provide some additional onsite, additional parking available on that side. I don't know about on the right-hand side of having onsite, you know, on the property, not within the, the street layout. It's certainly something that, you know, they are, as far as I know, they are separate associations, right?
Yeah, I think they are.
Yeah, so...
I was just wondering if there'd be somewhere else where you could...
Yeah, there isn't.
...have your family coming or whatever. Thanksgiving.
So was it changed after the comprehensive permit was issued? Was the permit issued for a certain level of parking, and it was changed sometime in the interim during the changing of hands of the responsibility to complete?
Trying to think what it was. So the original permit goes back from '04.
Oh, wow.
And there was 12 modifications to the permit. I'm trying to think back, I think it was maybe the ninth or something like that. I don't know if you remember, Chris, by any chance, just...
I think the, the inlet parking was removed when the town took over.
Gotcha.
The road.
Okay.
And Bob McGee's recommendation was to remove those inlets.
Gotcha.
Because at the time, it was initially going to be a commercial, obviously, development, so like Walgreens, where we have the little inlets.
Yep.
And Bob McGee felt it made more sense to make it a public way.
Okay.
Limit it to 24 feet and remove those.
Got it. Okay. Sir, right behind, Rich?
Racist Nurse, 33 Meeting House Road. Originally with those cutouts, we did have parking along Meeting House Road, when, because of basically the curbing, caving in, and not being able to be repaired, Bob's suggestion to us was to make it as straight as it is now. He did indicate at that point in time that if needed, we could park on Meeting House Road excluding the months of November through April, I believe it was, during the potential snow season. So that's sort of been an open issue, and if, basically, because of the, frankly, the amount of traffic on the road, we barely have anybody unless someone's temporarily visiting someone, park on the main road.
Because people hum through there, too.
And we have probably a similar, if the problem across the way is similar to ours as far as adequate parking, we basically, we do have people parking along our inner road, as long as they're parked over far enough that they don't prohibit the use of emergency equipment, fire and ambulance equipment coming in. So I think we probably both have the same issue as far as adequate parking.
Right.
We just try to police it to the point that we ask people to only park on one side of the inner roadway, but leaving adequate room for emergency vehicles.
Sir? I just need a microphone, sorry. Thank you.
Peter Bartoloni, 47 Meeting House. Sorry to beat this, but there is convenience, there is aesthetics as part of your property. Unfortunately, in my little block of buildings, we have a habit of setting off the fire alarms about every five to six weeks with, with a great amount of frequency. When you get a fire truck, you get an emergency ambulance, and you get a police car, on that road, it takes up, goes over the center line. The problem, the real issue, the safety issue is, is at night, is that people have gatherings, they have family, friends, they have parties, and it will end up with 10 or 11 cars lined up. If that's the case, and you've got all these emergency vehicles on the other side, no one's getting through.
Right.
And my, my concern, and that's why I'm here, is I want this board to understand that if those vehicles are in the way of a building, then this is going to prevent or cause further challenges for fire, emergency, and so forth to gain access to the building. So it's, it's a real safety issue in my mind, from my perspective.
Got it. Thank you. So it sounds like there's some legitimate concerns with the way that this is structured, and I don't know if it's necessarily within the purview of this board to be able to settle those, but is this something that's in front of Mr. McGee and others as we look forward to accepting these roads as public ways?
Well, I think, to your, to your point, is, I guess, the efficiency of getting this accepted and get it a municipal road and enforce it.
Is the first step.
You know, and, you know, like anything, I suppose you're going to have to kind of manage parking when you have a party and those kind of things, which can be an inconvenience, but, I mean, there are limitations, so I don't have a good answer per se, but certainly I suppose that people can, I don't know, be creative, come together, not, you know, those kind of things, I don't know. I don't have a good answer, but maybe there might be some times when neighbors might not be around, and you can share some of their space to park, I don't, you know, but it needs kind of a creative solution to deal with it, because there's certainly, you can't park on that road. It's not, I mean, it gets...
Does the T police the T's? I mean, by police, I mean, do they...
They ticket their...
They ticket their lot?
Yeah.
Like, if it's like a Saturday night and you're having a bunch of friends over?
Well, it's questionable about the consistency that they do over the weekends, but certainly during the week.
Just because that would, obviously, I mean, I don't want to offer up the T-space, but it's, right, you could just tell people to park right on that road right there, and they can walk right.
Oh, so you're not talking about the MBTA lot? You're talking about the Liberty Lane parking spots that we had designated?
Well, I was originally talking about the MBTA lot, but then there's those spots maybe on the weekend if they're not... I just opened another can of worms, I know, I can see why, look at me like, oh my God, I'm just trying to solve problems. And I'm creating more.
Creative solutions can help manage...
But we'll talk about that later. I get that it's an issue, so...
Yes, sir.
Racist Nurse again. When Bob originally made that change on the road, or the DPW made the change on the road, he asked us to communicate with our owners about that particular change and to primarily try to use either the inner roads or the one access we have past the flagpole area in the back, which is a much wider road if people needed to, to park there. I'm not sure at the time if there was any request for the new condo association across the street from us to, to recognize that as well, so it may simply be an issue of no one ever told them. And, because until someone told us and we communicated with our owners, they were parking along there as well. So now you just have an occasional car parked for a short period of time, dropping something off or whatnot, but I think the communication part of it may, may help.
Very good. So we have that as a takeaway?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Anybody have anything else for Meeting House Road? I'm seeing nothing. C.C., Chris, any questions from your end?
No questions.
Nope, not anymore.
All right. So, starting at the top. I move that the board vote to lay out Tailwind Circle substantially in the location of the private way known as Tailwind Circle.
Seconded.
Should I see them all, or do I have to do them individually?
Individually, please.
Very good. Here's a second. Any further discussion?
Very strongly about that.
No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I move that the board vote to lay out Silver Fox Run substantially in the location of the private way known as Silver Fox Run.
Seconded.
Here's a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I move that the board vote to lay out Saddle Ridge Way substantially in the location of the private way known as Saddle Ridge Way.
Seconded.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I move that the board vote to lay out Liberty Lane substantially in the location of the private way known as Liberty Lane.
Seconded.
Here's a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I move that the board vote to lay out Meeting House Road substantially in the location of the private way known as Meeting House Road.
Seconded.
Here's a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you all very much. Our next item is to please consider approval of Norfolk Carol's Sing-Along on December 14th, 2019.
So with the holidays... So with the holidays upon us, it's time to plan for the annual sing-along on, and the request is for December 14th with a rain date, hopefully we won't need, of the 15th. They've held this the last, I guess, number of years, goes very well, and they would also like to have a, be able to put up a banner on the first to advertise the event. We have heard back from both public safety departments, they have no issues, so we recommend approval.
Very good. Chris, you see any questions?
Nope.
No questions.
All right. With that, I would move that the board approve the use of Town Hill for the Norfolk Carol's sing-along on December 14th, 2019, and the erection of a banner on December 1st.
Seconded.
Here a second, any further discussion?
Did we, did we take a hundred dollar fee from them as well for this, for the?
We have explained the fee to them. We had, they understand, and we will hopefully take it and give it right back to them the next day.
Good, good. And do they need to pull a permit for the banner because of the size of it, or?
I think, since where it's going to go is okay for you guys to do that, so I think this vote will take care of that.
Okay, good. I don't want to get caught up in that.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Our next item this evening is to please consider discussing various articles on the special town meeting warrant and voting the board's recommendations.
So we let, we put this on the agenda tonight, on the chance that the board might want to discuss various articles on the warrant. It's, this is your last regular meeting before town meeting, so you may have many you want to discuss, or none. I wasn't sure, which is why I scripted an open-ended motion. Don't know if you have any particular things you wanted to talk about, so it'll really leave it in your hands whether you do or you are all set.
Chris, your thoughts?
With the moderators' meetings tomorrow at 10:30?
Tomorrow, 10:30, yes.
In this room?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, my, my one concern, I think I saw on the website, we have the advisory board's detailed recommendations on all these articles, and my only concern, and which I will ask the town moderator tomorrow, is that the F-11 process be changed from the building commissioner and town planner to the planning board. I still believe that it's a function of the planning board. I don't think there's anything critical that will prevent the planning board from taking that up, but that would be my only concern with what the advisory board has recommended.
Rich? Sorry, go ahead.
The, the one thought relative to that potential change in the motion is that, I know the planning board hasn't, so they'll, they'll discuss probably tomorrow, and then maybe they can just give it some thought on Tuesday. They have a meeting coming up on November 12th, so they can at least understand it. I think the, from what I understand from council, and that obviously town moderator has to confer that it appears to be within scope to be able to do that on town meeting floor. It probably should be, should, want to be fashioned in a way that there's maybe a designee from the board, because the present language, the way it's written, at least for the first part of the determination, to switch it to building commissioner and town planner, if it's not clear, it could deem to be the board that has to do that work, which in itself is not necessarily a bad thing, but there's some new components in there, like walking the property and getting that piece done that wasn't in the prior version, that if it was done by a, a board, it might be a lot more cumbersome to kind of handle, so that's just the only thought about, if that motion comes, that there's some kind of way to deal with that and not create a unintended consequence of having the posts and have a board do that work as a collective body. That's the, the only thought I was thinking about a little bit with it.
Okay.
The only thing I, we're just talking about the F-11 right now.
Yep.
I would, I would, I don't know that I necessarily need, because I don't know that it's in, I mean, I don't think it's inside the scope. I don't know that it is. But I agree with the issue, so I wouldn't want to have my, if, if the question that's before us right now is simply whether or not we as a body are supporting a particular article or not, I am not supporting that article as written. Okay? Does that make sense?
It does.
For that reason.
Sure.
Last time we spoke, I, I think, you know, we identified the fact that adjusting the language at this point to change the focus away from, as it's currently written with the building inspector and the town planner as being the two individuals.
Right.
Over to the planning board, there was a question as whether that was in scope or not.
Right.
And I think we talked about, you know, looking at how we'd be able to frame that in a more desirable way or better, more advantageous way. This initiative would be a better outline than the way that it's currently done.
Correct.
Right now. So if we got to the point where we identified we were not able to change the language to be able to point this to the planning board, that the preferable outcome was to go forward with this proposal.
Right, that's what there were three, I remember that. I just don't, I just think it's misleading for me to be sort of signed on.
I see, okay.
The way it's written, where, what, what I would be, I agree, right?
Yeah.
It's, it beats what we got.
Right.
But it doesn't, it doesn't achieve what I think it should, and so essentially we'd be saying, and perhaps I'd get down and speak to them on the town, on the town meeting floor.
Right.
Probably we should consider it like this if it's outside the scope, at least until spring town meeting, but I don't like the idea of sort of signing on to something wherein I'm saying, I don't like it, and we're going to have to come back and fix it in the spring, but we should at least do something, so that's...
Because there's always the potential that it doesn't pass in the spring and then we're in this position.
Right, or they, they decide, that the planning board decides that they don't, that they're happy with it the way it is, and then you're, and it doesn't, right, or you don't get enough, it doesn't end up on the, the warrant.
Right.
But I think, Rich, you talked to council, and council said that the language could be changed on town meeting floor, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, if he said there's a motion from the floor, a resident stands up and says, I, I'd like to amend the motion to, to designate the planning board or they're designated to handle this, that he felt that would be within the scope.
Oh, okay.
Right.
So, and they'll both be at the meeting tomorrow morning at 10:30, so they can talk about it more there.
Yeah, okay. So that being said, does this body want to take a vote to support or not support the article as written to be shared with the warrant or at town meeting?
I feel like, I feel like it's kind of confusing if we take a position where we're going to be coming maybe individually to the floor to say we support a motion.
Right, I agree.
What do you think, Chris?
I agree.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, is maybe we just leave this one well enough alone with everyone understanding that we think that there should be a, a motion from the floor.
Agreed. Okay, so that addresses the F-11. Was there further discussion anybody wanted to have on any of the other articles?
I am also of the opinion that I would not, and I, I don't think this comes as a surprise, like relative to the B-1 articles, there's a lot I'm not comfortable with, and so I wouldn't be signing on as being in support of those. I understand other people are. I don't expect for the board to say they're not in support of them. I just, it would either have to be two-thirds are in support or, or neutral on support.
Right.
As relates to the B-1 articles, which I think right now are what, articles two through?
Six or seven.
One through six.
Oh, one through six.
Rich, did you want to talk a little bit about the B-1 articles?
Sure. So I went to the advisory board last Wednesday, and I think it was very clear to me that it certainly is complicated. There's a lot of moving parts, and the purpose of it, you know, is some of the changes need to be kind of articulated better. I think it's something I said at maybe at, I think, the selectmen's meeting the night before.
There was a lot of meetings last week. Was that one of them?
I think, you know, there's, there's elements of, I think there's a lot of merit to what's going on, but until Penn gets the paper and then you write, write down some of these things, that's when I think you kind of test them a little bit. And I think, you know, some of the testing people weren't comfortable with. And so I did, after going to the advisory board, I had written to the, the B-1 and the planning board that we were, I was trying to get a meeting scheduled last night of both bodies, the B-1 committee and the planning board, to discuss holding off with the articles from the November town meeting, take some of the points that were raised, and look at them a little bit closer, but also be able to provide some information to, for people to be able to digest and kind of understand a little bit better. There was a lot of different things that came up through this process, you know. You know, traffic was one, impacts the schools. I mean, there's a whole host of those things, and in light of where we're at, as far as the time, you know, we're sitting on, you know, just over a week and a half away from town meeting, my advice or my direction to the planning board was to hold off. Now, they haven't convened as a body to, to go along with that, so, and we were, I was hoping that we'd have it last night, and then we could go to the moderator's meeting tomorrow and say, hey, it's all, it's all lined up. So it's kind of a caveated, so next Tuesday night, November 12th, that'll be the discussion that's on their agenda relative to the articles. And I've, I had discussions with Josh Fiallo from MAPC, and he, he appreciates, you know, the concerns that have been raised and the points and to be able to understand it. So we really want to try to get it right, you know, and there, there is, and articulate kind of that vision, because I think a lot of people had a, you know, it's the town's vision, and, and some of that vision's been, you know, done through pla, past planning efforts in the town, so it's, so kind of maybe bringing it back to people to kind of refresh themselves with that vision. And then the other thing, clearly, which, you know, hindsight's, you know, a great teacher here, but the advisory board, their member dropped off.
Yeah.
With the B-1, and so they weren't at all those B-1 meetings, and, you know, hindsight be what it was, maybe we would have pushed the advisory board to get before them.
To get another person.
To get their person on board, because clearly what we had set out in the beginning was have a rep from advisory, ZBA, planning board, et cetera, and then have that particular member report back to their different boards, which didn't really happen as much as I would have hoped. And so kind of pausing, going back, and then doing that, I think will be important going forward.
Mm-hmm.
Because one of the things I've learned through the process is, you know, people funnel comments through me, but it's important for them to funnel the comments through that body.
Right.
Because as somebody who's delivering a message, well, is it, you know, is it ex-member saying that, or is it town planner, you know, so I think that's one of the lessons learned, clearly, that those comments need to be, if a particular body has a, you know, a board member, then, you know, have them come to the meeting, articulate them, and then, I think would certainly help a lot with the confusion, would help clarify things. I think that was kind of another lesson learned. So, that being said, I think, you know, hopefully the planning board goes along with my recommendation, because I, oddly enough, I, and I did watch the advisory board a little bit to, because I didn't save the deliberation part, so I was, I watched the video back to kind of see what their, their thoughts were, so. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. So as this board's representative on the B-1, I will say from my perspective, I think we have a fantastic basis here to address a lot of the concerns that we've heard from a lot of people in town over the course of the last eight to nine months. I think that a lot of these initiatives, while, you know, pretty scary in nature and uncomfortable in a lot of ways, help us to get to a point where we can deliver on a lot of things that are in our guidance documents that we have in town, our master plan, our open space plans, everything that kind of directs us and identifies what our vision is, as a, as a community. I've also heard some great concerns come up, some things that have a lot of merit and absolutely deserve to be addressed before we get this in front of the community, because that's the main goal, is to get it in front of the town. Let them be the ones to identify if this is the way we want to go, or if we want to go in a different direction. So that all being said, I support Rich's recommendation to hold off until the spring, take this opportunity to bring some more voices into maybe the B-1 working zoning committee, those who have experience in the past with these types of initiatives, those who have raised their hand and say, listen, I have some major concerns with this, get their voice and their input put into the development of these and enhancing these a little bit more, so that when we come in the spring, we present to the community a viable and a strong alternative to the way that we've been doing things up until this point. My humble perspective.
It's a good one.
Thank you. Chris, anything you'd like to add?
I guess I did.
Yeah, he did, didn't he?
Very good. All right. Moving past the B, oh, thank you very much, Rich, by the way, much appreciated. Moving past the B-1 zoning articles, we do have other things to discuss at town meeting. Does anybody have anything they'd like to bring up, talk about, or touch on in relation to the rest of the articles?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Was there any on the other zoning, or?
Might as well, we're here.
Is that, is really the, I don't think so, but was changing the parking to the planning board, parking?
Right, from ZBA to the planning board.
A little well?
No issues.
Okay, all right.
None of mine.
Makes sense.
Okay. All right. Well, then, thank you.
Thank you so much, Rich. Have a good night.
Thank you, Rich. I have no other issues with any of the articles.
Very good, thank you. CC?
I don't either, really. I don't know that I, I don't know that necessarily there's anything that requires us to say that.
There isn't. I just want, like I said, I wanted you all to have the opportunity.
Yeah.
I think we, you know, if we like it, we get, we pop down and we chime in. If we don't, we don't.
All right.
All right.
Very good. Our next item is some warrants. All right. I move to approve the warrants dated 10/25/2019 in the amount of $823,970.88, dated 10/29/2019 in the amount of $727,649.73, and dated 10/29/2019 in the amount of $90,761.46.
So moved.
Here a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, the approval of some minutes. CC, would you be so kind as to make that motion?
I move that the board approve the minutes of the September 3rd, 2019, regular meeting.
Second.
Here a second. Any further discussion?
Not from me. Looked good to me when it got sent over. I'll sign it later if I haven't already. I did already.
Did you sign, did you bring Mr. Verge to sign?
Yeah.
All right. Any other further discussion?
I'm a life away without reading.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All right, well, that brings us to our executive session this evening, unless anybody else has anything for us?
I have a question.
Mr. Rosenberg, go right ahead.
When Blythe was talking about the Carol sing-along, she mentioned a rain date. The motion that was passed by, by the select board gave the primary date, but didn't mention the rain date, and so my question is, do you want to mention the rain date in your motion?
We can.
Is there one listed?
Yes, the 15th.
The 15th, the next night.
I didn't script the motion for the rain date. I focused on the original date. But you could take a friendly amendment to?
Friendly amendment.
Add that date in.
Okay, so we would, I would entertain a friendly amendment to add the rain-snow date of December 15th, that says 2018?
It's going to rain now.
Yeah, it's David E. D. everybody.
No, now it probably won't rain because he fixed it, right? It's like you remember your umbrella and it doesn't rain.
Okay.
Do we make our friendly amendment? Do we have to vote again?
I would say you're okay.
Okay. Good call out. Thank you very much. Anybody, anything else? Mr. Smith, nothing tonight, sir?
No. I was just here in case you had any questions.
Thank you very much. All right. Let's try this. I move that the board vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts GLCA 30, 30A, subsection 21A3, to obtain advice of counsel and discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation regarding the construction of the police station insofar as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect...